And everyone knows hereby given the city council of the city of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on December 7th, 2021. And city council chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue in the city of Alpine, Texas. Where the purpose of concerning the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act Government Code, Section 551.043. Public notice, the use of cellular phones and electronic equipment is prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council. Except for a purpose explicitly authorized by state law, Texas government code, section 551.023. This venue will be conducted in accordance with the official rules of decorum for the city council meetings available at www.cityofalpine.com/decorum. Public comments are limited. Public comments are limited to. Is this are limited to public comments and public hearing sections of the agenda. Individuals who wish to address the city council may do so by completing a public comment card and by placing the completed card. On the city secretary says no later than five minutes before commencement of the meeting. The public comment card may also be completed online at www.cityofalpine.com/councilcomments. A public comment card is not required for speakers who wish to comment on a public hearing item. With speakers acknowledged, please approach the microphone at the podium. Say your name and address for the for the record. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person and a bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Please conclude. Speaker comments promptly when the bell rings. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or state staff will be allowed. The mayor and or city council members may call a point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in the meeting, they may be barred. I'll speak towards this prize with a pledge. Thank you all. City secretary, do we have a call?
Yes, mayor, we do have a form with all members present. The notice was posted on December 3rd at 2:00 PM.
Okay, if public comments, do you have any?
We do have two public comments, but both of them did not fill out the required information for the ordinance to make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask those who read into the record who was not compliant for reasons?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
So I do have Rick Stevens and Karen Cantrell. The ordinance reads before each meeting of city councils, the city secretary shall make citizen comment forms available. On which any said city taxpayer or resident may sign his or her name and address and indicate the agenda item on which she wishes to speak. So. These don't have the address or the agenda item on which they'd like to make.
Okay, so for the record, please. Put the names that they did not complete fully.
Okay.
Okay.
So would you like me to? Would you like them to announce the address and you write it down and write the agenda number?
Yeah, I think that'd be prompt.
I will not give my address. It's not a legal requirement and we will take it to court and there is no reason to put agenda item on there either. It will also be challenged.
Okay.
All right. And Karen Cantrell?
Well, I don't want to give my address out because there's so many things going on and crazy people these days. Somebody disagrees with me. I don't want them to know where I live.
Okay.
Okay. So let's move on to presentations, recognition and proclamations. And we have to Tom Kennedy here.
He is not.
He is not. Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. Certificate of honor and recognition hereby presented to Tom Kennedy on the 7th day of December, 2021. For his three years of service in to the city of Alpine Planning and zoning commission presented by Underwood's Ramos mayor. So make sure that Mr. Kennedy gets this. And then we have another one, certificate of honor and recognition hereby presented to Dennis Foley on 7th day of December, 2021. For his three years of service to the city of Alpine Planning and zoning commission presented by the restaurant was mayor. So they are signed. And let's go with the reports. I don't have a report, city attorney report.
Mayor Council, Rob Potten, city attorney. I've prepared a legislative update. There's a whole lot more laws that got passed that affect cities than what I've given you, but I've tried to pick out sort of the top 20. That would affect Alpine and sort of give you all a little flavor of some of the laws that have been passed. The. Last year, of course, we all suffered with COVID, legislature suffered with COVID. We had a lot of issues regarding that. So they passed Senate Bill 3 that required that municipally owned water utilities. Have to ensure emergency operation of the water system during an extended power outage. At a minimum water pressure of 20 PSI. And by March 1st of 2022, which is coming up, submit to TCEQ for approval. An emergency preparedness plan demonstrated that the city can do that in a timeline for implementing the plan. So maybe the. The new generator could help the city do that, I don't know. Also, HB 872 on the next slide. That says that municipal owned utility, they call it the MOU, that's the city of Alpine's water and sewer utility. Cannot disclose customer information, including the address under the Public Information Act. Unless the customer elects elects to make the information public or certain exemption exceptions apply. So that's sort of the opposite of the way it is right now because up to now, that information has been public. But the customer could try to opt in and say, I don't want it to be out now. We can't give it out unless the customer agrees for that. So. The. You're not supposed to also talk about whether their accounts are liquidated, et cetera. And so the. Our water utility is going to have to start complying with that if people give public information requests for some of the. Information regarding a customer's address or some of that stuff. The. The. City customers can make their information public by filling out a form. But the city is going to have to send out that form to everybody that has a water account or put it on our website. So we have to inform everybody of their right to request disclosure. And that if they don't request disclosure, they're not going to have their information published or subject to disclosure under the Public Information Act. The next slide is Senate Bill 6. It increased the liability protections to a city. So essentially, the if the city it not be liable for injury or death caused by exposing an individual. To a pandemic disease during a pandemic state of disaster declared by the governor. So if the city took certain steps, the mayor said people could go to restaurants, for instance, or do other things. And somebody got exposed to COVID, he got sick and died, the city can't get sued for situations like that. So. It's a sort of increases the bars to claim to make claims against the city makes it very difficult for somebody to try to sue the city. For the city taking steps to try to deal with the pandemic or emergency. So. Conclusion is to just follow the best practices and ask people to stay home. But regardless, the city can't be sued for trying to do our best in those kind of situations. The next slide is Senate Bill 24 chief. They they have a bunch of new laws that apply to pre-employment screening procedures for law enforcement agencies. So starting next January 1st, which is. Three weeks from now, Alpine Police Department has to request from Texas Commission of Law Enforcement, TECO. The personnel files and employee records from each previous law enforcement agency employer of somebody who's applying for a job. Make sure they get employment termination reports maintained by TECO service records. Proof that the person meets the minimum qualifications and if they were a veteran, make sure they get their discharge papers, which is called a DD 214. They also have to make sure we have a record that we've sought their criminal history records, any warrants, insurance, et cetera. Notice it's they've crafted into law sort of the best practices that the police department should use to. Trying to hire somebody that that will make basically make sure that people will fall through the cracks that might have a a history of doing something. Bad in another jurisdiction and they came out here and applied for a job. So. They also have a new law that if a SB 1359 is the next one. And this one is if a law enforcement officer is involved in a. Situation, maybe shoot somebody or. Somebody dies or you know, something stressful that. We have to create a policy and guidelines for persons that are involved in those kinds of stressful situations that they can be granted mental health leave. That without reducing their salary and talk about the create a policy that. We would give the mental health providers names and we would help them out if they were involved in something that could affect their mental health status. So. Something that is to police department is supposed to sort of create a policy for that. The next one is eminent domain and the legislature doesn't like the idea of eminent domain. Cities do have the right to do this. It's exercised rarely, but we have to fill out a form if we've exercised eminent domain in the past year. And so. We just have to make sure that we keep up with that. And now they did change it to where the if we haven't changed, if we haven't exercised essentially if we haven't. Exercised eminent domain in the past year, we we don't have to fill out a new form, but we do have to make sure we have some reporting on file with the state of Texas. We. The next slide deals with SB 877 and building inspections. And once again, we don't want to let an emergency go to waste, so they have a. Law regarding the individuals that perform building inspections during declared disasters. And by the way, we're still under a declared disaster in Texas. We're not over it yet, according to the governor. Anyway, the. The. They expanded the list of people who can provide inspections to perform building inspections during a disaster. They include certified inspectors, city building inspectors, government building inspectors approved by the city and licensed engineers. So it sort of expands the number of people who can do building inspections during a disaster so that we can try to deal with situations. So. We we can't ask for extra fees for inspections during a disaster like what we're under right now, so. We can't add extra fee to the division that we have in the past. The next slide is SB 968. And we had to deal with this a year ago or so. Mayor, you know, the basically the the authority of a mayor versus the authority of the governor, county judge, et cetera. And they passed a law that says mayor cannot issue an order that prohibits construction or housing or commercial buildings. Can't prohibit service for title search searches or real estate. Matters, residential and commercial real estate services or other essential maintenance, manufacturing, et cetera efforts. So. Basically, other than for healthcare purposes, city cannot. Require. Proof of vaccination of things by nature. So we can't try to impose more rules on people here than what the state allows, basically. And finally, we're not supposed to publish any individuals COVID-19 health record or immunization record. So we have to be cautious about that. See. Next one is Senate Bill 968 also talks about during a disaster. Or other emergencies determined by the Texas Division of Emergency Management. That's the statewide emergency management agency. That TD that that agency will collaborate to conduct wellness checks on medically fragile individuals. In other words, in in future current or future pandemics, they want to be able to sort of be proactive and go check on people that. Might be old, might have compromised immune systems, things of that nature. But the the thing that rolls down the pipe to Megan is that. The city has to adopt a procedure to conduct these wellness checks. In accordance with standards that the Texas Department of Emergency Management hasn't yet published. So the next one on SB 1090 on building materials. They wanted to limit the city's ability to adopt rules, maintain the use of building materials. If those materials are approved for use by any kind of national model code. And the. Exception could relate to plumbing products if you're implementing a water conservation plan, I guess, having a toilet that doesn't use too much water, things of that nature. But essentially, they don't want cities to have stricter rules in the national rules. You have to realize that the Texas legislature is very much anti-cities and anti-cities trying to. Be independent. The next one goes with a public works project on HB 692. And this retainage is a contract term that says if you the city has a contract with somebody to perform work, you know, maybe. Don't do a building or pave the streets or water project. Retainage is the city gets to retain back part of the money to make sure at the end that everything is complied with in the contract. But the this bill, it's a sort of complicated bill, but it limits the amount of retainage a city can keep. Governments, how much it can withhold. Governors, how it has to be handled in case of the dispute. And so basically, in city contracts, Megan, the I, the city attorney have to help draft those contracts. Looking at this law to make sure that their contracts comply with this retainage law. The the next one, we all will be interested in this one. HB 1082. That if the city holds an elected public officer's home address. You know, telephone number, et cetera. Because that public officer previously worked for the city. That information is accepted from the Public Information Act disclosure. So normally a city's employees, a city employs information is subject to Public Information Act disclosure. So. Anyway, they're trying to give a little bit of extra protection to people that work for a city and then ran for office. The next one HB 1475. The Board of Adjustment. Is given greater authority related to variances under what we call unnecessary hardship. They didn't define unnecessary hardship, but basically it's anything that. Provides a substantial hardship to the person if that person had to comply with that zoning requirement. So it used to be that if the city's zoning required somebody to do something that was. Have to be the same thing that everybody else has to comply with, but it's expensive. That wasn't a reason not to. Make them comply with the zoning requirement. But this is a little bit of a window of opportunity for people to try to argue and say, well, that's going to cost me too much money. I can't afford to do it. Give me a break. So under this law, they can start arguing that. Trying to take an exception to building permit denial or something of that nature. The next slide, they talk about unnecessary hardship if compliance could cost greater than 50% of the appraised structure's value. Resulted in a loss of the lot, at least 25% of the area, other things in there. Anyway, it's a, once again, it's a little bit of a window that would let. Landowners or property owners use this if they're trying to do some improvement but didn't want to. They thought it was too expensive to comply with our codes, which. Anyway. The it's a it's a case by case thing. There's no hard and fast rule on that. And so it would just have to be dealt with individually. The next one of HB 1925. Call this the Austin Rule. And. The Austin was allowing camping in Zelker Park in downtown and everywhere else in Austin. Made the governor of the legislature mad as they passed this law that made it a prior under Texas law to camp on public city property. And so you can't have your bedroll or camp or be sleeping on public city property. That's a violation of state law that can be enforced by DPS or other people that enforce state law. And they say you can't do it unless the city gives consent, but then, of course, they got further into the law. They said the city can only give consent if. It's a like if it's an emergency, you know, maybe there's an emergency. I'd say big ice storm or something, people had to stay here, you know, camping out at the city hall or something like that. That could that would be allowed. But you'd have to have, basically, if you're going to do something for homeless people, you have to get permission from the state to have rules about it now. So it doesn't really. By an Alpine, other than the fact that. Chief, the homeless people can't camp in Alpine in on public property. So that's a violation of state law. So the exceptions to recreational purposes, I guess. Camping in a state park, you know, something like that. Writing emergency shelter during a declared disaster disaster or sheltering homeless individuals, but once again, that has to be under a plan that's approved by the Texas Department of Emergency Management. So that wouldn't really apply to Alpine. And then finally, the. You know, we just got the $1.2 trillion Build Back Better or the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It's going to invest in infrastructure priorities. And so we have about $35 billion for new infrastructure projects in Texas, so hopefully we can. With Megan's attractive help, we can identify some. Opportunities for the city to get some grants, make use of, improve our city.
That would be nice, right?
Right? Any questions?
Yeah, going back to. The bill 1090, I believe that's on the water restriction and whatnot. I mean, there there's cities that are limited as far as the amount of water they have. So that takes that far from from issuing they were on that water restrictions. They can't do that any longer, is that what it entails?
No, it's if 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 a city has a limited supply of water and they've got rules in there that. Limiting the amount of water you can use because of that, I think that's going to be an exception to the general rule here. So basically, a water conservation plan that a city has, you have to have that if you're going to limit what people do.
The city does have a drop contingency plan.
What's that?
The city does have a drop contingency plan specifically addressing these type of situations. Does it need to be updated? Of course.
Of course.
But the city does have something in place that does restrict usage and it's at various levels, depending on the nature of the disaster.
Right.
Or the level of the water.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that say they've taken that point away from us, but that'd be kind of ludicrous to do that.
The legislature would be happy if they abolished all city councils, but I don't think they want to have to worry about the things that y'all worry about either. Other than that, though, everything else is working on, it's going well, the city working on, provided some deeds to Megan on some things that y'all recently approved. Municipal court continues to go very well with this month, we only have in court once. One one time instead, we have it twice a month. But it's it's working well with the new crew that y'all have put in place.
Mr. Potten, before you, I had a question. And I apologize because I did not write what the bill number was, but the one in regards to the municipally owned utilities and the Public Information Act. And I'm not sure if it's more than a question, but where does the Public Information Act fall as far as asking our citizens to provide that information on their on their public comment cards? It protects people as far as their utility. It also, there's another bill that you mentioned where it protects elected officials from any of that information being given out if they were previously city employees. So there seems to be a lot of protection for that, yet we're denying citizens to make public comments if they don't provide that information publicly.
Let me instead of just giving a quick answer off the top of my head, let me look into that in more detail and I'll buy back to you and Megan on that.
Please.
I don't I don't want to give a wrong answer, but I think it's going to require me to do a little bit of research.
Appreciate it.
I'm not trying to boil the question, I just wanted to make sure I did the right answer.
Thank you.
Good question. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go to the city manager report.
While I start talking, I am that person who's for two and a half weeks has not been able to shake this. I am not COVID positive or anything, no flu, whatever it is, it just it's stuck to me right now. Um, so. Um, a couple of things I wanted to discuss today and continuing with the city's current. Um, we have been working on this for years, it seems like. I kind of wanted to give you a little background of what Eddie and I are putting together and how we're moving forward and how we want to address this. One of the key things I want to kind of bring up, and I brought it up at the last meeting, was. As a strategic plan for the city, moving forward, having something that's five, 10, 15, 20 years in place. So that every year you're not having to go back and reinvent the wheel. And so one of the things, as a friendly reminder, in 2018, the city did contract with KSA to do a street condition survey. The city spent money to have someone come in and tell us, you know, what is the condition of our roads? After it was completed, it was presented to the council in 2019 where the council accepted and approved this survey. There's been no formal use of the street condition survey with our actual paging schedule. Um, different people, different thought processes. I sat down with Eddie and kind of had the conversation with, you know, we spent 50,000, let's use it. And so we took a section of it and started in working with it. This is just a draft. This is the street survey. The first column is what we added to it. This is just like a little draft to show the the public and the council an example of what we're working on. They listed every street that the city owns. Has abandoned or hasn't, you know, opened as a public road, if it's owned by a county, that they've made all these notes. I took the very first section as a sample here. And it tells you basically where the road starts and where it ends. It also provides you what they call is category. These have all failed. These are roads that are beyond the normal wear and tear and they and they need to be addressed. They also provided comments. My favorite is the 20 potholes. By now, probably a few more, but they provided additional references to explain why it's at the level that it's at. So Eddie and I have been playing with this for about a month now, kind of going back. How do we want to properly present it? Eddie looks at his paving projects from the time he's been here. Eddie's been here 40 years, guys. So he's thinking paving 40 years of all the things they've done with this city. So the first go around, he was putting everything he's ever done as a city employee. So we had to go back and visit again. I just want to know from when this was approved by council to now, where the city stands with. Where the city stands with each of the roads. So we went back to the drawing board. We took all of the steel coating projects, all of Jared's projects. We've put them in this formal list and his assistant is working on updating the status. To show the council and the public, this will go on the website, so people can go into, hey, I wonder when my street's gonna get paved or. Hey, wait a minute, I'm in good condition, but there's a huge pothole in front of my house. How has this happened or what has changed? But to have it very open and in public, and you'll see on some of this is, like I said, this is a sample, you know, pending twenty-one, twenty-two. So some of these are already in place, some of them have already been corrected. But this is forty sheets of information that Eddie and his assistant and I have gone back and forth to discuss. So this is, this is a draft, this is a preview to what we want. Ultimately, what we'd like to present to council as part of a strategic plan is a beautiful map. To be able to show you everything from an outline perspective, year one, year two, year three. And to know when things are gonna get fixed, if it's a steel coat program, if it's a rebuild program. So that not only the council can be like, hey, yeah, you're on the map for this time period, or the public can be like, hey, I wonder when my street's gonna get fixed. This is the map that's currently in the public works office. This goes back to two thousand six. For me, the colors stand out. Yellow is Texas. That tells me from, from a city perspective, we're not responsible for that section of road. Those are your highways. That would be a Texas concern. But then you see the reds and I know, oh, well, in fourteen, you know, fifteen, that's what the city did. You'll notice, we don't have sixteen, seventeen. Eighteen is very sparse. There is no nineteen. Twenty is when we picked back up. We haven't updated for twenty twenty-one. We wanna make this not necessarily interactive map where you can go in and move things around, but just very visual for the public. This is, it's beautiful, because this is what Eddie sees every day. He's like, but no, we've done all of this. It may have been forty years ago, but, but we have done it. With that being said, um, we've already started looking at this year. And we're looking at estimated fifty blocks of steel coating. And we've already submitted the RFP for road materials, where we get the information back on what it's gonna cost. For the oil, the MS two, the gravel, everything they use to actually do the steel coating. And we're gonna be prepared, so on March first, weather pending, they automatically start. There, there's, there's no delay waiting for, you know, costs for, for material or delivery. Everything ideally is set up and ready to go. With that being part of it, the next couple pages, and this will be on the city's website, are all the blocks that are set up to be still coated this year. So we have, you know, East Gallego between South Nova Haynes and South Ferguson. From a map perspective, we want this up there, so people can also see. All of these roads are not dedicated to one part of Alpine. They are vastly spread out from the city as a whole. What Eddie did was he took the time and we kind of went through and said, you know, let's start addressing the ones that are the worst, so let's get the ones that need to be. You know, seal coated that we don't have to reconstruct. So he came up with this list. This is just the, the start. And around April, May, June, depending on where he's at, we're gonna sit back down and we're gonna revisit. Can we add more? It was fifty not realistic this year because we had equipment issues again, but to have that, maybe he does a hundred. We just wanted a starting point. So this is what Eddie had come up with as a great starting point. Like I said, you'll see south side, north side. It, it, it's just all over the city. This is just the seal coating. This is what the city does with the funds that were provided in the general fund. The whole next section is our full reconstruct. This is where we had during the budget process, we set aside about five hundred and fifty thousand to do actual reconstruction. We'll send out an RFQ. I don't know about anyone here, but I get those little flyers with, we're gonna be in your area, we'd like to paint your parking lot, your driveway. They're all gonna get copies of this RFQ. We're gonna send it out to as many people as possible because we are required to have that competitive nature. The number who respond, of course, is typically different. We usually get just one response, but in this list. We're gonna address. Three different sections. So when the person responds, they can respond per section. And it's important to address the fact that we've included Alpine Country Club Estates up to a hundred thousand. That was set aside in the budget at the request of Jerry Johnson, approved by the council specifically to start dressing the area out in the Country Club Estates area. The second section, this is new, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, is the airport. Um, I hadn't fully made this public. I had to, you know, cross my T's, dot my I's before I openly said, hey, we have money. Um, we have a cash inflow coming from another program that Texas Aviation had set up. Um, first thing I thought was, can I use it to pay taxiways? First thing they said was no. So then it was, what can we use it for? This money is part of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Fund, specifically set aside for aviation. We can use it to cover operating costs. So they kind of gave me the highlight of use it. To, to reimburse yourselves for expenses that you've already had, which means we have an influx of cash, which is what we weren't having currently. Um, I did have the opportunity to sit down with the Woodwards and. The Choppices and kind of said, look, I've got a great opportunity coming up. Let me just make sure that legally we can do all of this the way I'm envisioning. Um, I will know for sure this week, and I did find out. So we are gonna include the taxiway on the RFQ to pave that one section. Like I said, but the RFQ and all the proposals will come back to council for final approval. Please understand that part. Um, but it was great to have that opportunity, that option. That option has not been in place. And there is not that influx of cash with the airport. They kind of are, you know, expenses and revenues are head on head. Nine out of ten times, our expenses are slightly over their revenues. This will be that influx. Um, we can utilize what we're having coming in and then also utilize the ramp grab to make up the difference. This is the fifty fifty. The city never had the initial fifty percent to put up. That's always been the concern. And then the last section actually are continuations of roads that are currently under our paving agreement. If you've ever driven around Orange Street, you, you know that there's some nice craters over there. Abel's very well aware, cause he's right by his house. The railroad tracks to Gallego. West Hamline to West Uvalde. I had to put the not harm in because I kept asking that same question. Um, Westport Davis to West June and then North Biden back to North Third. So these are kind of in conjunction of what has happened in order to can continue and move outwards. As of right now, we're still under contract with Jared. He hasn't completed the last four sections. He started section four at the beginning of this fiscal year, had to take a break for. Weather reasons, keeping that the material at a certain degree is a lot harder. And so we still have section four. Section one is the big one and Mr. Kobels is not here tonight. Um, Jerry's very well aware of it. He's Hancock. If you're, if you come down Hancock Road. Jared did go in and make a temporary fix. He kind of tried to smooth everything out, missed a one pothole. But got the majority of it. This was just to get us through the winter, so the residents weren't going off one side or the other. I mean, it's gonna be one of the first sections to address when paving starts back up in March, and Jared is already fully aware. And then the second or two sections is section five and section seven. You'll notice that North Orange is on there. The request for qualifications for this next paving go around includes an additional part of orange to address the areas that have continued to deteriorate. That, that instead of paving and then five years later coming back and doing another section, we're trying to knock out the full section at once. So that you don't have what you see at the country club. Unfortunately, you've got two sections of that main road that have withstand the test of time lately. And everything in between is kind of falling apart. So we're hoping that, to prevent that moving forward. So that is my paving before I jump into the next section. Is there any questions, thoughts?
No.
Excuse me, I appreciate you trying to work in the airport.
I'm telling you, I, I didn't wanna say something and end up being completely wrong, but. It was a real relief to get that money, that cash flow. And it was one of those, oh, by the way, you're gonna get some money. It's like, oh, thanks. So and then they insured how we spent it to make sure we didn't do anything illegal. So I think most people are here to discuss the next section. Um, the utility billing. Um, I guess you could say I'm the mean one. Call me the Grinch. We do cutoffs monthly. It's not a new procedure. We actually do cutoffs slightly different than our ordinance. Our ordinance specifically says we will cut off water utilities after the twentieth of the month if we do not receive payment. That is monthly, and that's payment in general. That's not a partial payment. That's not a billing arrangement. That's if you have not paid your account to the full, we cut you off, we injure your account. And the only way to get a service is to come in, make your account clear, and then reestablish your deposit. We don't follow it to the T. We know that during the holidays, it's the hardest time. But I really wanted to have the discussion with council and those in the audience to understand, the decisions are, are made this way because. On the water side, we don't cut off an account until they're a hundred dollars or above. This means typically that either they're a high usage account. Or that obviously they use more water than, than the normal resident, or they're two months behind. If we don't cut them off at some point, then they become three months behind, and then they become four months behind. I, I, it's harder for me to expect someone to come in to make up that difference than the two months. Our average cutoff bill, like I said, is a hundred and above. This last month, unfortunately with Thanksgiving, we did cut people off. Um, we, we call them ahead of time. You know, we try everything to ensure that we get them in here. We were requesting payment, we were requesting arrangements. Um, the gas is slightly different, and I'm gonna kind of go back and forth between the two. The gas is set at twenty-five and above. Which means one, that they're high usage, or two, they're several months behind. And if you think about the minimum bill. Um, three to four days before the cutoff, we actually start calling. This was started in August because we had so many concerned citizens with. You know, we're not getting noticed, we're not getting noticed. So our customer service clerks took it upon themselves to, to, to call every person who is on the non-payment list. This includes businesses, it's not just residents, it's everyone who hasn't made the payment up until that date. Um, the only time we don't make contact with someone is if we either don't have a number on the account or the number provided is no longer in service. Um, we try to leave messages if there's a message available. On the actual day of the cutoffs, we don't just run the list and cut them off. We take all the payments that have come in overnight. We go in and we mark them off the list. You know, we're not gonna cut them off. They made the payment. You know, we're, we're doing every effort. One, to ensure that we don't double our workload, and two, people are trying to make the payment. And we follow up one last time. We have businesses who get very upset with us because. They think that we're accusing them of, of not paying and we're, we're not making any accusation. It's okay, you're on the list for non-payment. We don't wanna issue that work order. We have lots of people running in last minute. And then finally, between ten and eleven in the morning is when we actually go in and run a cutoff list. And then at that point, all the work orders get issued. So that happens on both sides of the utility, gas and water. Um, I kind of broke down what December would look like. The bills did go out December first for both utilities. Water bills are due on December tenth. Gas bills are due on December fifteenth. Our late notices for water go out the thirteenth. That is the Monday after, because obviously the weekends, they don't come in and process those. The gas department assessed penalties and interest on the sixteenth and then turns around and mails out the late notices. Cutoffs are the late payment are due December twenty-first. Because of the holidays, we're closed the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. We won't do cutoffs till the twenty-seventh. So once, it's the timing, and then right after that, we go back into billing. We have a very procedural system so that we get all the accounts cleaned up, so that when we go to our next billing. We're not double billing, or I made my payment but it didn't post in time and now it looks like I owe two payments, but I don't. So we try to get everything in, in that short window of opportunity and do the next billing round. All the accounts have to be clean, which means there can't be any. Odd payments posted, or, you know, maybe a meter read wasn't entered. So we have these reports that get printed out to verify all the information, then to go in to do the billing. The last portion of this is, is really all the concerns everyone's been hearing. And I do apologize, we are trying, it just seems more and more and more is, is coming out. We have decided that we will take the billing back in-house. And it won't happen overnight because we do have to order all of the material and switch the software over to in-house billing. Um, which means we will be bringing all the bills to be processed at the end of every month by our employees. We cannot do the postcards. When we switched softwares in twenty seventeen, the biggest complaint from the public was everyone wanted a postcard. That is why we went to a third-party billing, because the city could not do the postcards between our software and our equipment. They don't line up. We would have to manually adjust every postcard in order for it to print. Um, we have looked at ordering blue envelopes specifically to have water bill enclosed. On the envelope, so it's very obvious that this is your water bill. It will look exactly like the gas bill, just be a white eight and a half by eleven bill. It will have all the same information. It will just no longer be on a little postcard. So there are pros and cons to this. We have not done in-house billing for, for several years. So to understand the full cost process, will take about a month or two to see what it's gonna cost us in. In time, in the supplies, and in postage. It will increase the amount of our postage. Um, and that way we can come back and say, is it beneficial or not? I think the end result is gonna be more beneficial because the public, the, the bills aren't coming in like they should. They do go to Dallas. From Dallas, I can't confirm the next city, but they may end up in El Paso and then they come back to Alpine. Currently with the gas bills, we send them to our post office. Yes, they do go to El Paso and they come back, but it doesn't seem to take as much time. Um, so we will bring them back in. Another big issue that had come up was our ACH account late notices. We are training new employees. You've seen happy, friendly faces up front. We're switching them up again. Um, so that they all can learn the different aspects of billing. It has been unfortunate. We've had an unfortunate learning curve. Um, our software is very procedural. You have to follow each step. It, it's not one of those, I, I, I did the step and then went back into the other one, I'm gonna be great. No, our software doesn't like that. So when we posted the ACHs, the late notices had already been, the button had already been hit. Um, which means every account that had a balance on it automatically got that red postcard. Um, we are, like I said, in-house training. We're working better with our staff and, and our software. Um, you'll see some big sticky notes up front, you know, do not, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. When it did happen and it was made aware to me, we automatically started posting it on our website. We did put a PSA out. I did notify council. We take full aware of what happened, and we wanna ensure that it doesn't happen again, and it's frustrating. I'm on ACH. So, you know, I, I'm like, wait a minute, I know I paid my bill. And what was even worse is a lot of those postcards came during the holidays. They came at Thanksgiving and everyone was kind of like, wait a minute, what's going on? What happened? You know, tells me not to pay it and then you send me this notice. Everyone who's come in and everyone who's left a message or email, we have followed up with an apology. We are gonna try our hardest to not let that happen again. Um, a little explanation on the late notices. Um, we have a lot of citizens who will pay the tenth or the eleventh. Or maybe, you know, like the Friday's the tenth, which is our last day to accept payments before the late notices go out. But I came in on Saturday and I dropped it in the box, or I dropped it on Sunday. And then Monday, first thing in the morning, because of the timing of how our postage and then the notices go out, we will issue late notices. And citizens aren't, or residents aren't late, because they have made their payment, but it's really hard to have that conversation sometimes with. We know you made your payment. It's unfortunate because you made it on the eleventh, you're doing great, no penalties, you know, thank you so much, but the way we get the notices out. We have to follow up as soon as possible. We're hoping that by bringing the billing back in-house. That will prevent some of the late notices having to go out like that, so that we have that opportunity to post all those invoice or bills that come in, those payments. Um, to reduce the number. I know the big thing is it's a cost factor, and it is. The more late notices we see. Um, and it is. The more late notices we send out, the more it's gonna cost. I mean, we're hoping to reduce that and, and one of the ways we think that will be beneficial is bringing it back in house. So we're not in a rush to get it to the third party so that they can get it billed. So we hope you get it before that deadline. So I kind of wanted to give them an overview. Um, we do listen. We, we do take all the complaints in. Some days it, it's hard, it's harder for us because we know we need to make a change. We need to make an improvement. Um, we want everything to run a lot smoother. Um, most of our issues are on the water side. Um, gases in house. So and it's, it's half the number of accounts is our, our water, um, system. But we, we want the, the public and the residents and the council to understand we are aware and we talk on a regular basis as a staff. Um, thoughts, ideas, how can we make it better? What can we change? Um, the initial bringing it back in house was scary because it is an additional amount of time that the employees have to ensure that they set aside, um, if our equipment, you know, breaks down, um, we have stuff on gloves by hand. But understanding the what ifs to ensure we still get those bills out. Um, we sat down recently about training and, um, we have new employees. Um, we, we need to still hire a couple of new employees and, and do we make an internal restructure? Do we put people back to where they were? Uh, we did go ahead and make that decision. Um, we put people back to where they are work so that we could get back in line with what needs to be done for our residents. And we're, we're still trying to give every employee the opportunity to take on something new, to learn something new. Um, we don't want them stuck in the same spot. We all want them to grow. But we've had some really bad growing pains the past five months. Um, so we needed to take a step back and and get reorganized and, and get some new training and some new thought process in. Um, one thing that is always gonna be on the back of my mind is software. Do we make that jump and, and do we get new software? Um, do we look at something from the city as a whole? Do we look at it from a departmental? Um, I get phone calls, I get emails. Let me show you a demo. Um, it's always gonna be there, but we also know that that's an expense that the city cannot take on right now. Um, for what software we have, it fits the budget. Um, is it the best? Who knows? There's so many other softwares out there that may have that one module or, or software system that's just so much better. I think it, it is definitely a strategic op- option as we move forward into twenty twenty-two, um, in the next year's budget to consider how do we address it from there as well. But I just really wanted, you know, to bring all this information and, and ask, you know, questions. Um, just, uh, for future discussions, we are very well aware. Um, and, and we've taken the initiative and already made some changes in house. So hopefully over the next few months, things will kind of calm back down. Uh, we'll do a big PSA on the envelope so that when people get their water bills, they understand it's not gonna be a postcard. It will be a blue envelope.
Can you tell me what happened that where two individuals got cut off? That had paid their bill. What, where was our glitch there?
Um, so those would be the ACH. Um, when we post, so it's very systematic. Um, and we are training. We have new staff coming in and learning. You have to make sure you follow every step. Our computer or our software doesn't have that. Don't move forward unless you have done kind of mechanism. So between the software and, and training new employees, they posted the late notices and didn't post the, the payments for ACH, which means all those ACH accounts, the money was drafted. They did pay, but the late notices grabs everything with a balance. So because it hadn't cleared properly out of the software, it automatically grabbed it for a late notice and they were all uploaded.
So when the payment's made, it's not posted?
No, we, we don't post it automatically until the bank actually pulls it. So when we run our reports at the end of the month, it per, it pulls a report specifically for the auto drafts. And there's all these auto drafts. Prior, the city can go in and make changes. Um, we have an internal process and procedure that that's not allowed. We don't go in and, and try to change anything because it messes up the posting. So then on the day that the money gets pulled from the bank, the customer service clerk has to actually post it as this are a paid account. We don't oppose ahead of time.
So what are we doing to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
We have restructured and we've brought, um, back another employee who was under the finance. Um, to ensure that the training and the processes continue to move the direction that they need to be. Um, and just basically to re-streamline the process and, and provide that additional support.
I have a question, you know, what, if you pay with that PayPal, it seems to take a little bit longer for it to go through. Is that gonna be another issue or are we not?
So the online payment is a little unique. It does go through a third party. Again, it's a PayPal. Um, once they send us the report, then we can post it. We can't post it until they send us the report. But that's another training, uh, strategy policy trying to do. That's another training we need to address is that when we put people in higher positions to understand what's priority and what's important and that things have to be done based on deadlines.
Cause that PayPal takes two to three business days, I think is what it says.
So if you pay on Monday, we may get the report on Wednesday or Thursday. So we do have customers who call and say, hey, but I paid online, but we don't actually physically have the, the money to post to the account.
I'm one of those.
And if you don't wanna pay the three percent fee that they charge, you can sign up for the auto draft. There's no fees to charge.
Well, thank you for taking the time to go into all that. I know it was really lengthy. It does seem that you all are really trying to make changes to work with this. I would kind of like to ask, I know I got lots of calls about this issue. And I've noticed that the people that I got calls from aren't here. It was important enough to post on Facebook, but they're not here. I would like to ask that citizens that have complaints, please come to the office. Speak to Megan if you don't want to speak to the, the girls that are doing the billing or call one of us. It doesn't do any good to put it on Facebook. It only causes ish more issues. Animosity, yes sir. Uh, it just gets people going. We are trying. Uh, and I hope that you all will work with that. And instead of getting it hashed out in Facebook, please reach out to somebody that can help you.
And, and this will be posted online and, and we'll bring up the one prior. There are a million ways to get your bill. It, it's not just in the mail. You can get it by email. We'll, we'll email it to you personally. Uh, we'll fax it to you. We can tell you the amount on the phone. Um, you can, you know, access it so many ways. It, it, it does become hard for us when we get the Facebook complaints. It's like, but we have all these options, you know, we're, we're trying to, to meet every demand from the residents. Cause everyone does want something slightly different. But at the same time, like you said, those who have complained, uh, they're not here and we'll bring all that back up as well. So the people can see that these are how you can get your bill and and it will be a big public campaign. It will be a blue envelope. It do not have the exact color, but it will be a blue, maybe like Judy's sweater, but it will be blue and will say water bill enclosed.
Well, Megan, I wasn't aware that when y'all are cutting people off, it's usually two months. And I know that makes people mad, but I agree with you. You get to three months. If they can't pay one, they can't pay two. They can't pay three. There are, there are resources in Alpine to help people with any bill, any bill y'all have you can't pay. And when you don't pay your Bank of America, they're gonna cut that card. And when you don't pay your other bills on time, they're gonna cut them. Taking this back in house, I'm sure there'll still be little tweaks. It's not gonna just all of a sudden everybody go, oh, that's wonderful. But if they'll work with you, I think this is the direction it's needed to go.
Yeah, cause I've got, I'll, I'll follow where Chris is at. I've got all these calls and they're all irate at me. And, uh, I don't see anyone here. I did get the call. Hey, I can't make the, the meeting tonight. That's the way you should have been here.
And, and we, we like to, we listen, guys. We, we do listen to the residents. Um, I, I, I become a record sometimes and I, I do apologize. But we're trying to look at every option and at the same time, we have to make sure it's cost effective. Um, Judy volunteered to walk door to door to hand out the bills. Just gonna say that now.
Only, only award one.
But I, I really want, like I said, we're, we're very open and, and like you said, Chris, just pick up the phone.
Well, and the girl's been very helpful. I mean, when I, when I call, they're always very helpful and if, if they don't answer. No, but I, even if it's, if, even if I'm calling for my sister or someone else, you know, they're always very helpful. Um, and, and very respectful to, you know, so, I don't know.
We are very focused on customer service.
And that's improved greatly. And I hope some of these folks ever complain to me or YouTube, watching YouTube. You know, people tend to believe Facebook that's gospel instead of calling to the real source.
But you can leave a message too and they'll call you right back, which is great too. You know, I mean, they do call you back if the line is occupied.
Yes, we do have a phone log of all the phone calls. And our staff has been trained to keep the phone log open and then to return the phone calls. It shocks a little, a few of the residents. We're like, whoa, you called me back.
And right away too, so.
And I'm pretty sure I will be back up here again, having, you know, a conversation, hopefully on the more positive side with these are all the real improvements and, and it has been very beneficial to the city.
Great report. Thanks. Any questions? Okay, let's go with city staff updates. Chris.
Excuse me. Well, uh, I'm Chris Rujia. I'm the director of tourism for the city of Alpine. And so, uh, this is my quarterly report, but instead of telling you what I've done in the previous quarter, we'll talk about the rest of this coming fiscal year. Heather Yane at the visitor center and I worked with Megan to, uh, develop our annual, our goals for the year. So and let, run through those really quickly. Those are, uh, event planning and support, campaigns, lever- leveraging, recent market research, regional cooperative advertising, uh, walking tours and mobile apps. And then, uh, the one that Megan's underlined for us is, uh, advertising. We have a state law requirement for Alpine and Alpine alone of all cities in the state that we must spend at least fifty percent of our hotel tax collection. So the revenues we get in the year have to be spent on advertising, one half of it. And so our goal is to make sure we hit fifty-one percent. Now the last, last year was a very odd year.
Yeah, Chris.
The year before that, yes.
Before you get going on the advertising, on the hot money to fifty-one percent, I think we need to revisit that at the legislature. I know I was there, uh, a couple of years ago and it's a, it's a real easy fix.
Yeah.
And, you know, our representative senator from here would not budge on it. He would not take it on the floor.
That's true. It did, it did get, uh, it got pretty far at the previous legislative session. Now, there's kind of arguments on either side, uh, like, uh, it's good practice to set that, that money is intended by law to boost visitation. And the most direct means to achieve that is through advertising and promotion. So now does a full fifty percent required to meet that mark? Maybe, maybe not. Uh, some city managers I've worked with have, have felt that, well, you know, it's a, it's good practice and it just forces us to keep good practice. So it's, it's not a horrible thing, but this last year, we failed to meet it. We were, we were caught. Uh, so let's look at the next slide and we'll talk about the, the revenues. Our projected revenues from last year were four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because we thought, oh, the pandemic is gonna hit us and so we're gonna be real cautious. And, but we figured we're gonna do better than that. Uh, and then in May, I got a report showing that we were not, we had not collected a lot by May. And so I, I scaled back a little bit because I didn't wanna overspend. But then towards the end of the year, we had, the payments came in really late and that's just continued. And so I did a bunch of, uh, of campaigns right at the end of the fiscal year to get as close as we could without being stupid about just throwing money into the street. Uh, but, uh, we, we still didn't meet that mark, but then we were thinking it was gonna be six hundred and twenty-five thousand or so for the year, which to be said, that's a really good year for Alpine. When we, we broke five hundred thousand the first time, I would think like four years ago, maybe. It's about that. And so that's a really good year. And so when I was preparing this presentation, I asked Megan, so what's the exact number that we brought in so I can include it? Seven hundred and forty-two thousand. That's our, we've never come close to that level of hotel tax revenue ever as what we did last year. So we didn't come close to spending fifty percent. Now we do, the, there's not a penalty right now. There's a reporting requirement. So the finance department has to submit to the state, here's what we spend in each category. And they'll check that against the law. And if Alpine's not reaching the fifty percent, what we'll get back is a, hey, why didn't you meet that fifty percent? And this year we say COVID and they'll say, okay. And then, but our goal is to follow the law. And so, uh, so looking at this next year's budget, we, uh, we prepared the budget at six hundred thousand. Now, let me look at my, my notes. Um, and we were expecting, let's see, yeah, that was, uh, so we prepared a budget for six hundred thousand, but as you might recall, when we were discussing the hotel occupancy tax budget, there was some fun balance spending that the committee recommended. And so what I did was I added those together, what was, uh, out of our expected revenues plus the additional grants that the committee had recommended. And so if we spend everything that's currently budgeted, we're covered if we collect seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, which I'll be very surprised and delighted if we meet that mark again. Uh, now with all the uncertainties about ongoing variants and things like that, the same pressures that were leading travelers to wanna stay outside, to wanna go to places that aren't crowded, all those things are still working in our region's favor and, and will continue for a while. So I expect that those kind of cultural forces will continue bringing people our way more than usual. Still be surprised if we have another year like last year, but it'll be great.
We brought in a big chunk October. Um, we were still posting payments in November for last fiscal year. Um, STRs are dusting off their books and, oh yeah, I need to get a report. Um, so it, it, it's been a big shock. Cause when we have the budget amendment at the end of September, it's like, oh, we don't foresee bringing in more than, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand at the high end. We did.
Yeah. And we're, uh, we're still working kind of internally on what's the best way and the best frequency to get those revenue reports back to me so that then, cause what we absolutely wanna make sure is that by start of third quarter, if we're getting anywhere near that seven hundred and thirty-three, then I need to, you know, the hotel tax committee needs to get back together, you know, and we need to, uh, bring some new projects to you in addition to what's currently budgeted so that we can make sure that we, we hit that mark. But I don't think it's gonna be needed, but we. And so let's look at the next slide. Uh, actually one back from that. Yeah, let, look at that one again. Sorry. Uh, what we're adding up to that total budgeted amount, we have our, our hot grants. Those, uh, uh, each entity has their spending that will happen in each category. So that's something that I'll help them with. I'll facilitate those payments when they come through. Uh, but the decisions about exactly how that money gets spent is up to those grantees. Uh, then there's, uh, the general promotions and that is the budget that I oversee directly. That those are the ads that I, uh, that I buy, run by Megan, the plans. And, uh, and so that's the budget that I'll be talking the most about right now. And then there's my actual contract, which is mostly salary, but also includes some advertising funds. Like that number also includes social media ads. That way I can just put them on my credit card. Uh, and I manage that budget myself because the, not being a city employee, it's really difficult working those tiny little billings that Facebook and Instagram do. So, uh, so that number is not all me. It's got a, it's got some of those expenses and budgets built in that I administer day to day. So then let's look at the next slide. Uh, breaking down that hundred twenty-five thousand, which, uh, I'm responsible to make sure gets spent. Uh, Megan had suggested that I break it down into kind of modes of advertising. So we're looking at digital, which includes, um, website ads and included, doesn't include very much social media. As I said, that comes out of, out of my contract that I do myself. Um, it's our email advertising. There's a, it's also, uh, some, our mobile app that is attached to the maps on our. some, our mobile app that is attached to the maps on our website, uh, things like that. Print is mostly, uh, magazine advertising. It's got some promotional products and brochures, things like that. Broadcast is, uh, that's gonna be radio and television. Production is video production, photography and, uh, recording the podcasts that we do every other week, which is a small part of that, that we contract with the radio station. And then lastly, memberships, uh, that's Texas Hotel Lodging Association. Our membership with them is, that's the single largest one. Part of our official membership with them is a membership for every hotel year, including the short term, the registered licensed permitted.
Date hotel year. Up to date.
Up to date. That's exactly right.
They have to actually.
They, yeah, they're in good standing with their hot payments. They get a membership as a incentive to the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. It's also Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau, bureaus and the Texas Travel Alliance. There's a lot of resources that they, uh, provide for best practice and training and things like that. So then the next slide. Uh, event planning and support is one of our, uh, additional big goals for this year. Obviously, hot grants are a big way that the city supports events. Uh, I work with, uh, every uh, event that has a grant to make sure if they need or want assistance consulting on promotions. Uh, obviously, uh, many of them need to know, how do I get my money? So I walk them through that process and I receive all of their, uh, receipts and stuff, pro- uh, process them and get them to Finance Department to make sure that the checks go through. Promotions in addition to their, their actual advertising spending, a lot of times they don't know how to do a social media campaign. So I'll actually do that for them. Sometimes they'll, uh, I'll plug their credit card into the social media. I'll build the ad, it builds their credit card and then I'll help them get the paperwork back to the city. Um, and then also our own promotions, uh, my own social media budget, I'll supplement. Because that, right now, uh, Facebook and Instagram are still our most targeted way to reach specific people in specific places. So, uh, so I do a lot of that. I had mentioned consulting already. I meet with, uh, a lot of them to go over ideas about, uh, what are the plans for the event? If there's anything I, I can help them with, connect them with resources to get, just make the event happen. But my specific, uh, area of experience is in promotions and marketing. So I provide them whatever, uh, whatever they want in that, in that area. And then lastly, of course, the Visitor Center, Heather, uh, is the point of distribution for those events. She and I plan to resume, uh, before COVID, we had twice a year, we had planning meetings with every event organizer we knew of. We would all meet at the Holland Hotel and write all the events that we knew for the next twelve months on big calendars. So everybody could see uh, what was in conflict, where the opportunities are. Uh, we're hoping to resume that in January. COVID kind of ended those, uh, in-person meetings for a while and we've been sort of regrouping, but that's a, that's a big goal.
You'll try to coordinate with the people of other counties in the areas so you all don't have two events.
We do. Uh, we invite, uh, obviously Alpine's our focus. We don't generally go much far beyond Marfa Fort Davis Marathon, but we, like, uh, Tralina folks have come up to sometimes to those. And so we absolutely want, we want Heather to know everything that's happening in the region. And we also, yeah, we want everyone who's doing an event to know what other events are happening in their weekend so that they can, either they can dovetail those things or they can maybe shift dates and in that sort of thing. So that's event planning and sports. Next slide. At one of the things that I spent some money on at the end of the year, when we had more money than we expected and needed to spend it, was on a new, uh, a new market research report. It was, it was a set of visitor profiles. It used, we had, we have been using for less two years, a visitor profile set that was data that was from our hotels. So it was really, uh, reliable, but not very many of our hotels decided to participate. So our sample size was very small. So we knew it was a good picture, but not a complete picture. And so what this one did was it used mobile data, anonymized, uh, data on devices. So devices that came to Alpine and stayed for at least eight hours, uh, and then they did a lot of, uh, science to it. Uh, so there was forty-one thousand plus visitors that they identified as travelers to Alpine over the period of September twenty twenty through August twenty twenty-one. Uh, and so what we're looking at is what was happening during most of the pandemic and hopefully looking at the trends leading, leading out of the worst of it. So I'll then show you, uh, the top four of those audiences that we're looking at right now. The first two are very similar and these track really well with our previous reports. That felt good. We were not, uh, pointing in the wrong direction. These are suburban, young suburban families. Um, and go ahead and go to the next one, too. Both of these are similar. There's some geographic differences, some slight, uh, ethnic differences. There's one, one of these audiences has a larger percentage of white members and the other has a slightly larger percentage, percentage of Hispanic. Uh, and so it's nice to actually see there's more diversity in this report than there was in the previous one. And that, you know, made me happy because, uh, more different kinds of people are coming and joining Alpine.
We're a diverse area.
Exactly. We really are. Um, and then, uh, the next one is one that it's kind of obvious, but didn't show up in our previous report, which is a Midland visitor, but this is a younger, uh, a younger visitor that's a millennial to Gen X. They are largely single, which, uh, which was a surprise, but, um, most of the time they're traveling uh, with a partner, but not necessarily a married partner. Uh, and the next one was the biggest surprise. This is a much younger, single traveler than we've ever seen before. It is, this, this person is much more Hispanic millennial, uh, in terms of percentages. And this is someone that didn't show up before, uh, but the youth of this group, while that's new, I think it's largely explained by the pandemic is that this was the group of people that when I was reading the travel sentiment of the nation, you know, the different reports that I would get. The one group, it was the younger group that just wasn't as worried that was traveling all through the pandemic. So, uh, I think this is what we're seeing more represented in this data set that we got is all through, uh, those pandemic times. These younger groups is just, they were more risk tolerant. And so they were willing, more willing to travel. And so now our opportunity is, here's a group of people who have come out to visit us. So now we have relationships to build uh, with these folks and invite them to come back. And then as they, uh, as they age and they marry and they turn into the next, you know, the, those young families, we build that relationship and keep them coming back. So, uh, so this is good information for us to work with. The, uh, the ad agency that I, uh, that I bought this, you know, market report from, I'm, I'm still working with to make sure that they're gonna help me make, get really good targets for these audiences when I'm doing my social media buys. And I'm also working with them. On the next slide, on the regional cooperative advertising piece. So these things will also be informed by these audiences and what we can determine that interests them so that we're speaking to them in these, uh, regional groups. So none of the little towns around here have very much money to spend, notwithstanding that we brought in more than we ever had. But our general promotions budget, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, how did that seven hundred, you know, so it's a small amount of money. And so to get better reach and to get into higher quality publications, well, we can partner with our friends and neighbors. So, uh, for years now, I've been working primarily with Marfa, but also sometimes with Fort Davis, sometimes with Brewster County. Uh, Brewster County has a lot more of a budget that's only for promotions. They don't do the grants. And so they don't have the need, the same need that we do. So a lot of times they're not as interested in participating in these, but we do uh, partner with them when they are. Um, and so the model that we've taken is, uh, that I've shown you before is we hire a feature writer to write a magazine article and then we buy a page and we run the article rather than just running an ad with the idea that if you're looking through a magazine, you're, you're wanting to read stuff. And so we're gonna give them something that looks like what they would wanna read in a magazine. And that has, and if they're actually interested in the content, they'll read about these. And, and right now it's Marfa and Fort Davis and Alpine that we're working with. And so our goal for this year is to expand this model. So and specifically, we're gonna start with Texas Monthly. Alpine has done, they have these travel guides. We've bought little expensive, but little ads and to, so that we can get in their spring and fall travel guides. And what we get with that is some editorial. We get a little, we get some photos. I've really leveraged, sometimes gotten a lot of big photo treatments in these tra- uh, travel guides. But we're gonna expand it so that instead of our little Alpine ad, we'll have the full advertorial, but also we're gonna do the digital thing. So that, that article will also be a sponsored article on the Texas Monthly website and we'll get the digital component in their digital travel guide. So that's an experiment that we'll be doing. Uh, other regional things that we're looking at, there are discussions about some, uh, Economic Development Administration grants through the Rio Grande Council of Governments. This is just discussions. It will obviously come to you guys and follow the grant procedures when we, we get to that point. But right now what we're looking at is, uh, the hook that it would all hang on would be a tour app, a mobile app that would cover almost the whole Texas mountain trail. I think it will focus on historic sites. Uh, but there's an opportunity because promotion of the app can be part of the grant. And so I'm getting more proposals for this kind of advertorial model to see. We can, it's an eighty-twenty match. And so we can use our regular advertising as long as it funnels towards that app somehow as the match money. And so I'm hoping, we'll see. It's a long shot, but I'm hoping that we can leverage that match to also get more advertising. Cause the app will be valuable, but only if we market it. So anyway, I just wanna put that on the radar. There's something, there's conversations happening. Uh, but there's still a lot of work to do to get a workable budget on that thing. And then lastly, uh, the Atkins Group is the ad agency in San Antonio that I got our market research from. And I first, uh, met them when they came to Fort Davis to pitch a regional project that they have had in mind, which is a, it's a series of campaigns based on a website. Uh, it would be, uh, billboards, a lot of digital ads. And they have the targeting facilities that I don't, you know, my, what I can do in Facebook is pretty rough. They, when they have the bigger money, they can get a lot more, a lot more specific. And so their model is they get a little bit of money from these partner communities who are represented on the website, which is, and they're looking at the Big Bend area specifically. And then they're talking to Yeti and Toyota and Valero, uh, who, for whom, you know, two hundred thousand dollars is easy to say yes to. And so they've gotten a lot of interest from these big sponsors. So that's an ongoing thing. I had some of our digital money I've budgeted to this. And since those are the folks that we've identified these audiences, the first, uh, digital campaigns for this project will be targeted specifically to our audiences, cause that's the research that they have available. So, um, that's what we're looking at for regional cooperative advertising right now. And I think that's everything that I have.
Chris, are you incorporating my dot size status now?
I am wherever possible. That was a kind of a toss-up as to where exactly it fits on the goals, cause something that I'm working on continually. Uh, and where that kind of sits right now is McDonald's Observatory is obviously very active. Laura Gold and a small group, uh, that formed under West Texas Friends of the Night Sky. Uh, but it's sort of disbanded on COVID and it's coming back together. A lot of their interest is in the infrastructure, isn't trying to educate folks about good lighting, trying to get our ambient, our skies even darker in Alpine. Of course, my, uh, my priority is getting people to visit. And now that's gonna, that's a long-term win for getting people to visit for sure. It's very important. And, uh, and when those folks come and talk to you, obviously listen to them. But, uh, but my priority is to, with them is event-based. And so we're talking about trying to do some kind of sidewalk astronomy, uh, little, small festivals that would be, that could happen in Alpine. And so I've been talking to those guys about, what's the best time of the lunar cycle? You know, then Bill Ren had some really good suggestions there. Uh, yeah. And so, yeah, and along those lines, you guys should also know that McDonald Observatory is having their first ever Dark Sky Festival in April twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So I'm working with them to help promote that because, and I'm gonna see if I can't tie in some Alpine hotels into those promotions specifically. Uh, but regardless, we get a lot of star party overnight for the observatory, even though the event's not happening in Alpine. But in the ongoing, in the future, I'm gonna be working really hard to get more of those experiences happening right in or right near Alpine. And so one thing that, just to also put on your radar, we'll be looking at, I would love to designate an Alpine Dark Sky City Park. We would have to work with Police Department to make sure that, uh, and obviously the neighbors, wherever that's gonna be, so that people, everyone knows that this is gonna be somewhere where at night, there will be people there looking up. Uh, Laura and I walked through a lot of the different, uh, pretty much every city park after dark. I did email Daryl and let him know we were gonna be, uh, after the parks were closed, looking at basically where are the streetlights? Where's the glare? What's the best, uh, experience for seeing the stars in all our different parks? The very best one, uh, was Nopalitos, uh, on the creek, right behind the jail. It's in a little neighborhood, very small, very quiet. So it's not suitable for any large events, but, uh, this is the sort of thing that just designating something like this is something I can promote. And then we can, we can build on later. Like what I think I'd love to see is, uh, just one of those little, uh, low-power binocular uh, things, somebody could look at the moon, you know, they could just, uh,
Drop the quarter in.
You wouldn't even have to do that. It would just always be on and they could, uh, and they could, they can look up. Uh, but it will require looking at, uh, at city ordinance. Now, it does seem like if, when I reread the Parks Ordinance that Coconut and Vanes actually have hours mentioned and the others do not. And so there wouldn't be any legal limitation there. But there's conversations that clearly need to happen, uh, both with, uh, the Parks Board, with APD, with Megan, and then with the neighborhood and then you guys.
I did talk to Darren Nance about utilizing the American Legion Park that's in my ward, you know, maybe for, for something like this.
Yeah. Well, and one of the things that Centennial Park was also, cause it's so wide open, there are streetlights, but they're pretty low in your field of view when you're, and, and so that might be something that would be cool for like a live music nighttime, you know, stargazing thing. So there's a lot of opportunities there. And, and obviously the Dark Side Reserve that, uh, is underway is just a really promotable thing. We wanna take as much advantage of it as we can and provide people with the good experience.
Which you'll have another report on that soon because Chris was part of that meeting. Um, I did meet with the observatory, a few representatives. Bill Ren is retiring. Um, we're trying to pull all his knowledge from him now, um, with Laura Gold, a few from.
I think everybody else was from the observatory at that meeting. Yeah.
Um, they've provided a wealth of information for resources, for education. Um, we did come up with a, you know, a plan, a strategic plan for the next five years. Um, what we were looking at is not only just how do we get to the event side, but where do we start on the education? And how do we become compliant? And then how do we educate others to become compliant as well? Um, it's one of those, we need to be the example. Uh, so that is gonna be a presentation in the future with kind of ideas and things that had come up and how do we move forward? Um, and then how do we start ensuring that we're, we're part of that night sky and our events can start planning around that as well?
Yeah. And one of the things that, that came up in those conversations was when we have an event that's fun for people to come out and, uh, and look at the stars, one of the things that can be part of that, cause that'll bring people from out of the area, but it's also something our residents can enjoy. And so each of those things can include some demonstrations as to, cause I don't know about the folks here, but night sky friendly lighting that's shielded. It, when people hear dark skies, they think they get a little bit scared. They're like, well, I need light on my property for security. But all the lights that we're looking at, they do fulfill that function so much better. You can actually see better what's happening on the property when you're, the light's not in your eye and things. You can actually see better what's happening on the property when your, the light's not in your eye and things. So we can have some of that educational things at these events as well. So we're brainstorming a lot of different channels to get that message out.
Before we continue, we kind of moved kind of fast and I didn't want to ask Chris to go back and sit down. Can we go back to your city manager?
Yes, thank you so much. I was gonna say, can we have a, right? Um, there was one thing that I didn't include in the report itself that I did want to discuss in light of recent events. Um, I did want to first give the city's condolences to the Scudder family. And if you aren't aware, Michael Scudder has passed away. He was our fire chief and he also ran the ambulance service. I did have the opportunity to meet with several people, the mayor was there included, in regards to moving forward. And the county, the hospital district, the sheriff's department, the police department, down south representation, and of course, the mayor and myself met, Ms. Scudder was there, Jessica, Mike's daughter. We, we have a game in plan. As of right now, it's, we did a little PSA out to the public and we want the public to be aware. If you call nine one one, the services for fire and emergency, there will be no disruption. And we are moving forward. There will be some changes that will have to be made, but if you do call nine one one, there is no disruption in the service.
So we are moving forward with the same company. They will be staying in business.
I can't answer that directly. I can tell you as of right now, we're good.
Okay, can you tell me what we're doing as far as leadership with, with the fire department?
The fire department has an interim fire chief. Andrew Pierce has stepped up. He has been there quite some time. Um, it is a volunteer fire department. They do operate under their own bylaws. We do have an interlocal agreement with the county to assist with the services for the fire department in regards to the equipment, the liabilities. We do cover workman's comp, we cover retirement. We do budget a specific amount of money to help with fire calls, supplies, items that they need to fulfill their job.
And Mr. Pierce does have a higher level of training and certification and all that to meet the needs to provide the guidance and leadership that a fairly young fire department will need.
Without understanding their bylaws, I don't know how that position is happening. I am scheduled to meet with him. I sent out an email asking. I do know that he also, I believe, works full time. So I have reached out to him.
When do you think we can get a little bit more of a idea of what we're moving along with?
I think once the different entities, we will be meeting again. We did discuss probably having to have an emergency meeting this month to go over any of the changes. Everything is kind of, I don't want to say up in the air because it's really not up in the air, but there's other entities that have to make a decision and step forward as well.
But we can assure the community that EMS services and the fire department is being led in a way that is there will be no disruption of services to the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you possibly, when we have that special meeting, have somebody from the fire department? And then please come up just in case we have any questions.
If I may interject, part of our meeting today that we had was responding to calls. Alpine Police Department will continue to respond to all ambulance and fire calls. And that goes as well for the sheriff's office outside of the city limits. But um, one of the first things that I did when I took over as chief, all my, all my staff attended a training held by Andrew Pierce and Mike Scudder to make sure that we understood everything that's involved in the ambulance so that when we respond to ambulance calls, we can not only assist, but take over what we need to. So there's, there's no questions on what's to be done.
Well, we have a paramedic, a licensed paramedic on call.
Questions?
And thank you for reminding me without a slide, I, the, the community is covered, both the county and the city.
Okay, let's move on to public hearings. Public hearings to obtain citizen views and comments on conditional use permit applications to allow applicant Joseph Ardelao to establish an outdoor event slash venue that has unusual site development featuring unique operating characteristics that include the serving and sale of alcohol by vendors at special events and outdoor sales and music. Properties located one oh five East Murphy Street. Record owner is Joseph Ardelao, is Mr. Delo. Okay, would you like to kind of speak on a little bit?
Are we able to get that since he is the registered owner of the land?
She can just give a, how do we just going to discuss it right now? We're not going to load on anything, discuss it and try to get some quickers.
Good evening. My name's Mary Ann Luhan. Hi, I'm the mother of Joseph Ardelao Junior. And can you hear me? Okay, I'm this on one oh five East Murphy with this conditional use permit. I do have events, I have had events, at least five events, celebrate Cinco de Mayo. And we have a new event coming up, which is Fiesta eighteen eighty eight. And we celebrated, I saw a harvest festival. And I've had other several little events, you know, for family fun events. And on the alcohol, it's only if a vendor wants to come in and sell the alcohol and they will be responsible with a T A B C. I will not be responsible for that. And so if we have like Fiesta eighteen eighty eight, it will be a big event because I am going to have two music artists that are very popular. But they're on the Murphy Street, will have to block the street. So that'll bring in a lot of heads on beds to Alpine. And I do plan, you know, to have this annually, this Fiesta eighteen eighty eight and Cinco de Mayo, of course, it's been going for twenty seven years. And I just want to continue to have a family fun event on Murphy Street. People have really enjoyed it. We've never had any issues at all. Thank you so much for listening.
Any questions for?
We can't do it on public hearings.
If you can ask to pervert applications. All right, thank you, Mr. Flub. Mary Ann, thank you very much. Yes, sir, Chris.
I just want to speak in favor of this conditional use permit and point out that the city does already sponsor and approve Cinco de Mayo and the Fiesta eighteen eighty eight are hot grant funded events. So uh, so we've already approved the spirit of them. So I would encourage you to approve the permit.
Thanks, sir. Okay, anything else? Let's move on to public hearings of citizen views and comments on short term rental special use permit applicants. Megan, you have anything on that?
It's for eight oh eight North eleven, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, eight oh eight North eleven Street and one oh one North Cherry Street, number three.
Okay, so I've come on with the action items. We've got it here on the, yeah, public hearings, yeah. Okay, let's move on to consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item and it or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence. After the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be by one vote. Mr. Culladon?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains four items. First one, approval of November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting minutes. Second one, approval of transfer of Karen Saluski from a hotelier position on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee to an at large position. Third one, approval of the appointment of Evan Henke to a hotelier position on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. And the fourth one, approval of short term rental special use permit applications for eight oh eight North eleven Street. Record owners Tom and Kathleen Griffin and one oh one North Cherry Street, number three. Record owners Blauterio, Esposito, and Von Zions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I like a motion, we approve the, this consent agenda that was presented.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, also been made a second in the discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's move over to informational discussion items in our city managers.
So back on the agenda, I, I really wanted to sit down and discuss with council regarding the boarding commission vacancies, process procedures and ordinances. I also want, I want the council to understand, this is not something new. This has actually been on the agenda as far back as two thousand and four. Um, a lot of like, where are we at, what's going on? In the synopsis in the background, I kind of provided a little bit of information. I also included every ordinance that is on our website. I want to make that clear, which, which they may be slightly out. If you notice, the music isn't on our website and the transportation. Um, back in two thousand and sixteen, this was brought up as well. How do we align what the city council's looking for and what the boards and commissions are doing? Um, it was discussed in regards to how do they qualify for a boarding commissioner? Do they need to be a resident of the city? Can they be a resident of the county? Do they need to be a taxpayer, a non taxpayer? Every ordinance at the time was a little bit different. You'll see that they're still a little bit different. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, like I said, this is, this is an ongoing project. And it was brought back again to include, you know, the selection of the chairs. Who selects the chairs? Do the boards select the chair? Does the council select the chair? And the responsibilities of the chair. Member dismissal, you'll see in the ordinances, some say three, some say two. The resolution passed in seventeen. If a member was not present at a meeting, two meetings in a row, that they should be removed. The city has not enforced this because we have an ongoing issue with getting people on the boards and commissions. And they're a vital part to helping you guys. These are your boards and commissions. And it was brought up again in two thousand and nineteen with the discussion. There's been a lot of confusion. So we went back and did a lot of researches. Was there a resolution? Was there an ordinance update? How did we get to where we are at today? In two thousand and nineteen, during one of the presentations, it was a discussion item about putting on that online application to encourage people to go online and apply for positions. And then those, that information would go to the council person. As you've noticed, every board is kindly, kind of handled differently in regards. Do they have to represent a ward? Can any council member put them on? Can they put them on for another person's ward? Are they at large for a position? Who selects the chair? In two thousand and twenty one, in August, this was put back on for a discussion as far as the process of procedures to appoint the members. Of course, in August, the resolution was to establish and solidify the process of the appointment of the community members to city boards and commissions, which did not pass, it failed. And in the following month, it was to create a committee. And we have fallen on the committee side. Jill and I have spoken at length in regards to it is we really want a little bit more direction as far as how do you want the, the council or the, the committee selected? Do you want it to come made up of boards and commission individuals? Do you want it just random people? Do you want it city staff? And we've gone back and forth. But the first thing we really wanted to kind of understand from, from a council perspective is what do you want your boards to do? All of them are supposed to be advisory. But at the same time, are we properly providing them the guidance on what priorities and projects that the city is looking to move towards? What do we have in place to help them to encourage people to join the committee? Because they know that they're going to be advising on maybe projects? Or are they just advising as a whole? And we have nine boards and commissions. The, what is it? The Beautification and Environmental Ordinance created a Beautification and Environment Board. They've never met since I've been with the city about. That's concerning because you want to make changes. Maybe we need to take a step back and decide what do we need to continue with? And what do we not need to continue with? It may not be an issue of how we get people on boards and what they're responsible for. Is maybe we need to decrease the number of boards in general. And the most recent Transportation Committee that was created. And this one has specific projects outlined in the ordinance that they're supposed to be providing, you know, advice to not only council, but to the city manager. This board has never been formed completely. It has two individuals representing it, but none of the other positions have been put into place. And this board has been, you know, since two thousand and nineteen. Something to talk about, is this a value or something that the city wants to continue with or not continue? And we also look at, from looking at all of them, is how regularly should they meet? We've got two that meet or three that meet every month. Your Parks Board is very active. Your Planning and Zoning is very active. Your, what is considered the Alpine Advisory, which is the airport board, are all very active. How, do we, do we solidify and realign what the city wants with a fewer number of boards? Do we look at them as more of a committee that meets twice a year? Music Board is only required to meet twice a year. They were established so that the city could be considered a, a, a music friendly, and I think Chris walked out, a music friendly city. But we've not gone back with that expectation of us, how are we music friendly? We do have the Viva Big Bend. We do have hotels and committees, or hotels that bring in specific bands, the, the local bar establishment as well. So I really thought we need to look deeper into this. And it's not a matter of getting people on boards at this point.
You know, but I thought like that Thursday, you know, the mercantile thing, that's another one that, you know, the music venues have, have been coming into with that. Who organizes all of that?
So that is a city ran function that is organized by Heather and Chris that was established because of the pandemic.
But I'd like to, you know, continue that in a sense. And maybe this music committee might need to have more discussion based on that. I don't know how, how would we get them to? Well, I think these, these boards and commissions are for a different purpose than, than setting up. No, but they would have some kind of input, I would think, you know, with.
That's the direction I think we need to really look at. It's not only do, we have these boards and commissions, but what are they, what are they honestly advising you on?
What was the Transportation Board's question? If they've never met, obviously not a whole lot.
And let me pull it up.
Like you said, the beautification one, I know that they hadn't met either. But could, you know, in a sense, could we incorporate that with the parks and recreation? You know, we combine, that would be a great combination there.
And that's why I really want us to have this conversation is do we make combinations of certain ones and give them more areas to focus on? Do we eliminate? Let me get to this one. So the Transportation Committee is supposed to present an adaptive reuse of historical buildings, enhancements of sidewalks and street crossings for pedestrians to improve connectivity, develop a plan to build a quiet zone outside of city train staff changeover, develop a plan for a truck and train bypass around Alpine city limits, develop a plan to repurpose existing train tracks right of way to a multi-purpose walking, hiking and biking trail system and its connection to our current park system, improved connection of Murphy Street to the downtown district, promotion of economic growth via small business development and local entrepreneurship.
I think we need to cut down on some of these, which are the ones that we absolutely have to have.
I think a lot of that transportation can go on these other.
Well, the transportation was part of this, was with the Highway sixty seven corridor study because all that was incorporated. Okay, and well, because of the pandemic is why it, it kind of stopped everything. And so I'm pretty sure we need to revitalize that to see what we're going to do because in the near future.
Why don't we have a historical committee about the historical buildings? And I don't know that we need that or it can be in some of this.
So Planning and Zoning actually addresses the historicals.
Now, and then we have some of them like Planning and Zoning that is doing things that they're really not set up to do.
They are also. They are also now open to not being able to meet because they are down to exactly four members. Which means the special use permits, the, the building permits, things that need to go before them, that really should go before.
Like the special needs, the special needs doesn't need to go, I mean, that's not what planning and zoning is set up for.
That's why I think we need to go.
Not, you know, not according to the, the government guide.
We need to go.
So they're, they're, they're doing things that they're not supposed to do, but going back to the question I asked, which ones do we absolutely have to have?
Planning and zoning, boards and comm, wait, I don't want to say the wrong, building and standards.
Now, we didn't used to have the building and standards before, and having a city inspector that seems to have, so are we tied into a grant or something now that necessitates us having? That board?
The building and standards actually has existed for quite some time, and the last building official wasn't too keen on it, so they haven't met. Hadn't met since David had come into the office, his recommendation was to do a board of adjustments, which is a whole other can of worms, uh, entirely.
Do we need this one?
If you, it depends on who you ask, cause if you were to ask David, he, he said no.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, there are some that are tied to, to grants or money that we absolutely have to have. So, okay, this is not one, so like that, I feel is duplicating a lot of services that the building inspector does. So, I mean, if we cut down on some of this, it might help to be able to recruit some of these people that we have spread out into nine boards, if we put it down to four, some of these people that are active, cause it, I feel like we get the same people that want to participate, and we don't have enough to fill up the boards that we have. So I think if we did away with what we don't need, we might be able to, to recruit those people into other areas that they might be able to help us with.
So before the meeting, I did tell Geo, like, you realize I'm gonna put this all on you. Uh, um, I would like Geo to take the time and, and, and configure and not completely reestablish, but narrow down what is absolutely needed. I think you do need an airport board, I think it's important. One of the things I, I've mentioned since I kind of came into this role is, we will be doing things differently in this upcoming budget process. And one of the things that council needs to, to have in their pocket is those boards advising you of what is important, what they're hearing and feedback from the community, so that when we go through that budget process, you're not out there searching and wandering around on, you know, trying to get information, the boards are presenting it to you. Um, moving forward with the agenda and staff updates. All of these have a requirement to meet with the council. Um, they will come back before council, they will be a staff update or actually a board update, if you want to say. Um, so that you're aware, what are they working on, um, I, I don't know if any one of you.
Isn't that why we put the chairs on there, and that's what they're supposed to be doing?
Yes, it is. We're also failing as council because we're supposed to be able to give them at the beginning of every, every, I don't know what you want to do.
Every year.
Whatever, we're supposed to give them an idea of what we're expecting from them, and we're not, so in, in a lot of that, you know.
They're, they're, they're sinking and swimming.
Well, can we have a workshop, can we organize a workshop and then, you know, work this through? Because I know that, you know, Ms. Stokes had talked about this before, getting to know the people and know who's on it and have that kind of workshop so that we can make those connections like she had specified before.
Well, I had tried to bring it up and y'all didn't want to go for that.
We are, um, only because of the feedback from council and, and, and some of the boards, you know, Karen's on the parks board. They have these wonderful ideas, but by ordinance, they can't act on them. They can only advise, they can't go out there and do their own projects, they cannot commit the city, especially financially. Um, that's, this, that's why I wanted it all out here today for discussion, because as we go into January, the budget process starts and we need to have these conversations with the boards and sit downs and, and I've listened, like I said, to the council and, and I've gotten feedback from the boards and I, I want us to come together, have those workshops, um, to meet afternoon or, I'm sorry, evening, so everyone can attend. And, you know, the first one being, what do we need? The second one being, let's visit with all the boards and commissions.
I don't think we need to do it as just as council, I think we need to allow citizens to be into this board, uh, not just council to take it upon ourselves.
I think you need the board members to vote, now they're the ones that want to own these boards, let them be involved now. And during that, if they've never met, they're not involved, they're not doing anything, I don't care what we were supposed to have on highway sixty-seven. If this, these people have never met, there's only twos, and none of us are represented, no wards represented on the transportation board. So how are they gonna meet?
Yeah, though, uh, there's two separate things, Judy, we're talking about, one was a tech, it was a tech start, uh, initiative. But it incorporated a lot of the side streets leading into, uh,
Right.
Texas streets, and the study was completed. Now, it's ready and all they're waiting is for funding, so when the funding comes in, bam, there it is, we're, we're done with our study, here it is. Okay, instead of at last minute trying to do a study.
Who's doing the study?
It was Texas, and that did it, and, uh, that lasted for what, six months, seven months? And then they came up with another one, about talking about the bypass.
None of us may be a lot.
It'll be on the, on the records.
The truth, I mean, and if they've never met, why do we need it?
Chris's question, these would all be open to the public. That this, this would be, you know.
But I'd like to have them on the committee too, I'd like to have them in, on the decision-making, not just council.
I think once council decides the direction they want to go, then you can form the committee to, to, to fill out the ordinance side. Right now, we're, like I said, we have nine boards and commissions with no direction.
Yeah, because all of them, none of, there's no consistency in any of it.
No.
One of them will say that they are going to be appointed by the mayor, some of them say they're appointed by the city secretary. Some of them will say, I mean, all of them say, you know, two, some of them say two absences, some of them say three. Some of them says, you know, some of them, the, the, the vice chair is by council, some of them is by the board. I want to see some consistency in them as far as all of that.
This discussion, but we all, you didn't want the city attorney to draft it up, it could be drafted real easy. You said, well, anybody can type it, but we haven't seen any of them.
Well, I'm.
I haven't seen any of that.
But I asked for a committee to be set up and you all were against that.
Cause I think we need a huge committee, if he said.
You never said, I should have a small committee, you just voted against it. I don't think, I don't think that we just need to have the city attorney drafted up, I don't think we need to have just Megan drafted up, I think.
That's how you're gonna get the consistency, because they're gonna want to meet three times.
I understand that, but at one point, there, we should be able to have input from other people besides us. This doesn't just affect us, I feel we should have somebody off the boards, we should have somebody from the community, we should have somebody from council, we should have somebody from, from administration, it shouldn't be just what we want, just what the attorney would draft up. I think it's important that we include people from all aspects.
Well, I think if we do have a workshop, then we can discuss all this ma, these matters.
Yeah, and more detail.
And more detail.
Yeah, because if you get too many folks on these committees or whatnot, then it just goes off the door. Everybody's got a different idea, you'll never get anything done, so.
So let's set up a. A workshop and then we'll take direction from there and then, and span it out.
And honestly, the first step is what committees do you need, and what do you want? And, and do you want them to, to, to be a permanent fixture that, like your planning and zoning, which is required, your airport, which has been very, you know, um, active, your, your parks board has been very active. And then go from there as far as the, the details, how do they get appointed, how many on a board? Um, and that can be just, right now, I think there's just so many and so much, and, you know, I wanted everyone to have all the information, and, including, you know, we have more and more vacancies and, and we have boards that have never met, and, and if they haven't met, is there really a need to have them? And like Chris and Judy and you guys have said, let's combine them and, and the parks board, the parks could deal with beautification. I mean, the whole idea of, of our parks is a beautiful environment for you to come and enjoy with your family. Let's take it up a notch, but the council has to provide that guidance. We've depended on them to kind of like, here's my agenda, and you know, this is what we're doing. I just want the relationship between the two to be bridged, so that when I start putting the chairs on the agenda to update you, you're not blindsided, the public's not like, whoa, whoa, when did they start working on that? Everyone is very well aware of, these are our priorities, this is the plan the city has in place, this is how the boards are advising and providing that additional information, a, and, and they help do your, your legwork, your groundwork.
Because for now, there's no structure, really, and I think like, uh, Sarah says, that we do need to have a workshop. And this, this trying to get a structure put together and then work off that. And then it, then you expand it right correctly, but, uh, yes, sir.
Um, what date were y'all thinking, like January timeframe? Did y'all want sooner?
Well, I don't know, because Megan says that we might be having a special meeting called in regards to.
But that's totally different.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, if I can continue, uh, what I'm saying is, we're already having a special meeting and we need to keep in mind that the holidays are coming up. So I don't think a lot of us want to be having meetings these next two weeks.
I think January is the perfect timeframe, it's not necessarily the start of our fiscal year, but it's a brand new year, let's get back on track and, and let's get this cleaned up once and for all.
And lastly, I just wanted to know, you know, there are three vacancies on the planning and zoning commission. Ward two and at large and award five, uh, we did have the two resign recently after three years of service, so.
Not a single one of them can miss a meeting, otherwise there is not a forum.
And the chair has not made a meeting since being appointed.
He made one.
Okay, he's already missed two, you know, are we, are we at the point where we have to?
I, I'll take responsibility for missing the first one, cause I, I didn't really notify him. I didn't have him on my distribution list, so that was my error, the second one, he did get to and he didn't miss last night's meeting. Um, cause he was out of here.
But you're correct, how do we follow up with that and do we stay on track if the third or second, depending on how you read it, do we notify them that they're no longer on the, the board? Um, and is this a council responsibility, or does this come back on, you know, the city secretary, city managers, we've now terminated them? You need to replace, you are correct, we need to ensure we follow up.
Okay, so after the January meeting, let's set up a special meeting for that then.
I will be forwarding more information as I find it through ordinances and resolutions. Um, to get you guys as much information as possible, so that you can see that this is not new, that this is a continuation. And we're just kind of at a point with, you know, gotta buckle down and, and get it, get it cleaned up, and I think you guys are, have a great opportunity.
Yeah, and you know, with combining some of these boards, you got people that are really, that are showing up and want to volunteer to do the work, and it kind of disillusioned them. And they just go drop by the wayside, so combining them, that gives them an opportunity to jump into, to a committee, it's gonna be active and open.
The animal advisory is the other active one, sorry. When it comes to the hot time.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and move on and we'll go to the action items. To be accommodated by brief statement effects, include where effect, uh, funds are coming from. And, uh, again, it's yours.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash oh one. A resolution designating the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds. First disbursement to improvements at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents to be held in the text our account.
Okay, oh, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a second discussion. I've got a question, but you said, uh, this was gonna be the first, uh, distribution.
Yes, um, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to provide you guys a little bit of background besides what I, I put in. In March, um, I did a presentation from a financial standpoint that we would be receiving one point three million. Um, the state, after all of their formulas and calculations and how they decided to divide the money, came back with a little bit more than original. Um, the state does allocate and dictate how we kind of process these funds. And the city as a whole actually is receiving one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents to be divided into payments. This is the first payment, and I think it would be best to allocate it towards the wastewater plant, um, that is our real struggle. Um, this is only half, um, the second payment will come back in twenty twenty-two. Um, for the other half of what has been awarded. The city is required to maintain the records and properly, uh, spend these funds, we are under, um, the money is allocated by the state, but we have to respond to the US Treasury. So all of our documentation on how we spend this is federally guided. Um, one of the items that it can be spent on is the infrastructure, um, water and wastewater and broadband. Um, that we will report back to the, uh, US Treasury. Um, I'm only requesting at this point, um, half, i- it's not the full amount. Um, you'll also notice that the, the city manager will need to provide you a, a report of how the money is spent. Um, if you are aware, we did find, um, the contract for the replacement of the aerator and the bar screen for seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, this would be something that could cover that. Um, the second portion of the funding, I think, needs to come back before council and, and reevaluate where we're at with infrastructure. And then some of the other categories, at this time, i- it's only requesting this portion to go towards that.
Question, what would it take money-wise to bring the wastewater treatment plant to par? Do we have an idea?
That is a great question, um, we have contracted with the engineers to do a study plan. Um, at this point in time, this could cost anywhere from fixing the aerator to six, seven, ten million dollars. Um, they are working on putting that together so that we know every aspect of it. It's not just the aerator or, or the racetrack, as we thought, where the stuff moves around. Um, we have clarifier issues, um, we have, um, allocation of where the waste goes, um, our drying beds are no longer usable. Um, what methods do we have in place, so they're, they're looking at that from the whole standpoint, start to finish. Um, yes, you can, you can say we are continuing to Band-Aid it, um, these are Band-Aids though that, that are huge. That they're not the little ones that we've been doing over the past years, we have to have that aerator, we have to get the clarifier.
Like, do we sell those tanks?
The two.
The two motors?
Well, they're too big.
So, um, I had brought it before council before, um, and gotten permission. Um, the city that was interested has yet to come back with, with anything, yes, we can sell them, um. Um, but we do have a lot of fixes that were taken into consideration that haven't, haven't worked out, and, and now we're seeing, we, we bought a twenty thousand dollar aerator that didn't even fit our system. We've spent sixty-one thousand on the, their, um, drying boxes, um, that unfortunately wasn't what the city needed. Uh, we do have a, a press belt, um, it processes the sludge. Um, kind of like, it's a conveyor belt, it goes in and it just starts to dry it out and, but we still have to have a place to, to put it before we can dispose of it.
Was this money included in the budget?
No. This is in addition to, this is one of those windfalls of money that came in, and that we, I, I'd like to secure for that, that purpose.
Okay, any more discussion? And all's in favor, raise your red hand. Pose, like sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Let's go to item two.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash zero two. A resolution approving revisions to the informational city council agenda cover page.
Okay, the motion.
Make a motion to approve resolutions twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash oh two.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would, I would like to amend it, amend the word address and replace it with the word ward. On the public comment. To Karen's point, I think we, I feel we need to know what ward we live in, but we don't need to know where you live.
Thank you.
And I would like.
Is that public information?
No.
No. Um, we need to change the ordinance, if that's the case, it was passed as we need their address, we need the item number or the agenda item, et cetera. And it's explicitly said that if they don't fill it out completely, that they're not able to make public comment. I mean, I'm fine with whatever I want to do, but we will have to take it back.
Why don't we wait and see what Rod finds out, I had asked him earlier to see where we fell on that.
Suggestion would, would satisfy your question, but I will throw, review that, give you an answer.
Cause I do think that, you know, we don't need that on there, you know, we, we, we have, we have, we're protecting all that information on, in all other areas, utilities. Uh, us as elected officials, but yet.
We do, we do need to know what ward.
Yeah, that's fine, but not the address, not any personal information, phone numbers, nothing that we, we're not willing to give out either.
Okay, so you're amending the motion.
Well, to Chris's point, she wants Rod to further.
No, he says that would.
Okay.
That, that, that was my issue with. That 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 was my issue with it and 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 we do that, but we can't, we can't amend that.
I just want to note that there was a resolution doesn't really override an ordinance, so and we really need to go back to the drawing board on that ordinance.
In other words, it will be at the first meeting in January.
Yep.
So we just need to vote on it and.
You can approve the cover sheet.
Okay, you can, yeah, approve.
Then I would make.
And I think that's all it was, just a cover sheet and I think.
One, one in a ten.
I would make a motion then to amend the cover page, replacing the word address with the word ward.
Okay, so you make it a motion.
I think if you did that, that would support with the agenda if you have the resolution approving a revision to the city council agenda cover page.
Okay.
Your second was to amend the the cover ba, the word address specifically with the, with the word ward.
Exactly.
Okay, so is there a second on that? Okay, motions been made to amend the uh original motion. It's been second. Now the discussion.
I just want to compliment you. Uh, I think other than that, it looks wonderful. And you've done so much work to try to bring us up to par on all these forms. And I just want you to know that we do appreciate your hard work on that. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? So we're gonna vote on the amendment then. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment? Raise your right hand. Okay, can we see unanimously? Now let's get back to the original motion.
As amended.
As amended. Okay, all those in favor of it, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you all very much. And I think that will clarify a lot of it. Okay. Let's go on to item three.
Approve a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to issue a conditional use permit application to allow applicant Joseph R. DeLo to establish an outdoor event venue that has an unusual site development featuring unique operating characteristics that include the serving and sale of alcohol by vendors at special events and outdoor sales of music. Property is located at one oh five East Murphy Street. Record owner is Joseph R. DeLaOo Junior.
Okay, motion.
Make a motion to approve. My intention with planning, designing committee. Or to issue a conditional use permanent application to Joseph DeLaOo.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's made. Second discussion.
Um, I have a couple of questions, but I just want to know legally where we are on getting, doing all this when the actual landowner is not providing information on what is to be happening on his land. Are we okay with that, Rod?
Yeah, the, but we've always allowed landowners agents to appear as good. Uh, like even planning and zoning.
He did provide all the the paperwork and the background information. He he's doing this on his own. Um, he's just having someone step in to help represent.
Okay, I have a question on the parking. Uh, I do see that it says one space, one space for each four hundred square feet. Where is this parking gonna be made? I I feel like Murphy Street's already congested. We have a new business coming in, which is going to congest it even more. So where are we? Are we talking about putting in this parking?
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Go ahead. Could you step up to the podium, please?
Well, uh, for the parking, when it's a small event, we do have enough space for some, some of the parking. What is the square inside the property of one oh five East Murphy? So what it, what is the require, how much space or how much like the the square footage that we need for parking?
No, I don't know. I'm just wanting to know where we're gonna put this parking.
Additional.
Yeah, because when it's a small.
There's in reality. I mean, when I have a small event, there's not gonna be even smaller big event. Uh, there really isn't parking on Murphy Street. I mean, if I have people park inside the property where I'm having the event, well. It's, you know, it's gonna be a problem.
Right, and that's, that's, that's.
So, and usually when I have an event, there, uh, we do street closure.
Right, but it also, it also congests the 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 parking on the residential area. And I'm just thinking of what it's gonna do now that we have, now that we have the brewery coming in and they.
And the ranch, Richie.
Right, so I'm just worried about the congestion there. And I I do want to say that I I I wholeheartedly support all the work that you put on there. I think those events that you put on are wonderful. It's a great way for the community to come in. I think we just need, I would ask for a little bit more work on the parking situation and I'm not sure where I stand on the twenty four hour no curfew.
Uh huh.
It kind of makes it a little, a little bit hard. Even our, some of our parks have a curfew which allows uh, the police department to have a little bit of control over it. And if we have something that has a no curfew and and is can be allowed operation at twenty four hours. I'm wondering what that's.
Well, and the reason that I ask for the twenty four hour is if we have a food truck out there. It uh to allow it to stay open like to two AM. Like if people want to come eat after after hours from the, from the bar. People like to go to like, they don't want to have to drive to Penny's uh diner. Like the ninety nine cent store, they're open till two or three o'clock in the morning to serve food.
But allowing alcohol in this, Darryl, where does this put us on if somebody just wants to go and she has?
No, I'm not gonna allow alcohol at that hour.
But, but. Yeah, but what I'm saying is we're we're giving an open ended one. So where were we? Where are we on if people go and just congregate there at two, three o'clock in the morning to drink or something like that? Where?
Well, for one, you you had a state law that prohibits any drinking or consuming alcohol. After two fifteen in the morning. And then they can't start drinking until till two, so.
Do you have a right to stop and question anybody if there is no curfew there and there's a group of individuals there? Do you have a right? Will you, would you have a right to stop and see what was going on?
Yeah, not really, no.
See, because that's what worries me, not when you're having the activities. Because I know you're awesome about being there the whole time that those activities are there. I'm just wondering what will happen when it's, when you don't have an activity and we have. We have okayed and open end.
Okay, well, I I will personally be there if there are food trucks, if I have a food truck when it does happen. I mean, I'm not gonna allow people to be drunk on the property.
Right, but what happens when we, when there is no activity, when there are no?
Yeah, but of course I'm gonna be there. Why would I allow people to come and drink on my, on the property? Because I will be liable for that. You know, I mean, it's not to come uh after they, it's, it's just to have a food truck and not everybody that's uh drinking, it's gonna be open to anybody that wants to come and get food.
No, I'm saying when you don't have.
Yes, I know, I understand. So like when I don't have the event, let's just say for an example. I have two food or three food trucks there after hours. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there's gonna be people. I mean, why would I allow people to go and drink there? Either you're gonna come get food or step out.
So what you're saying is we give an open ended one for twenty four hours all the time. There are curfews. There is going to be something there all the time, either a food truck or activities going on or something.
Well, probably more, more than likely, it's gonna be for food. That's why it's a twenty four hour. That way, if I decide, okay, I'm gonna stay open till two AM. Or one A, I don't know, I did, it just, it just depends how the, how it goes.
But you can control anybody bringing liquor after a certain timeframe.
Exactly.
Because that's what we do at the American Legion. You cannot bring after a certain timeframe.
Right.
And we don't allow anybody bringing any, any beer or whatever, because we sell our own. And I think if you're gonna have somebody selling beer there. You can't let anybody just come in, walk in with their own beer.
And it's not really, and really if we do have any alcohol, like sell alcohol sales, it's gonna be when we have an event and that's gonna be up to the vendor.
And that'll be, and that'll be up to the permit.
Top of, yes, exactly.
I I think in more in line with what Chris is asking. The property right now, there's nothing sitting on it, correct?
Correct.
So if this was to pass and I decided to go over there at three in the morning because now it's a no curfew twenty four hours. What's gonna regulate that person on that property? Drinking a beer or doing anything. Right now, what you're asking, Chris?
Like there's nobody on the property right now. Yes, but why would they go on the property if they have no business, if there's nothing sitting on there?
Yeah, Darryl.
I mean, why do they go to the park?
Could you answer that, Darryl?
They can go anywhere.
So, so um what they're referring to is people are, people are gonna congregate on locations. You you have the the Christmas tree up.
Okay.
This time, and so you may gather, people may just want to go and to hang out next to the Christmas tree. And so
And drink.
And so if the, if the people are there, that and you, you're opening it to the public. The possibility is that they may show up drinking their own alcohol.
Or disturbing the.
Disturbing, maybe not even drinking, just causing issues. The the, I I'm just worried that Darryl and his officers don't have anything that allows them to go and question, you know, hey, what are y'all doing? Like I said, even our parks, most of our parks have a, have a curfew and it's, it's just a way of trying to keep things controlled.
Understanding.
Right, no, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm not. Right, I'm not saying, I'm not even saying I'm against it. I'm just bringing up some of the, it, some of the things that I wanted clarification on that I think when you, that I wanted answers on and clarification.
Okay.
So how does that work? Like at Stripe, it's when it used to be open twenty four hours, Penny's diner. Well, of course, there's people there. I'm gonna be there. If I'm gonna be open till two or three AM with a food truck, right?
Stripes has a, has a license that prohibits them from selling alcohol at certain.
But I'm not gonna sell alcohol. That's the thing.
So when Stripes was open after twenty, twenty four hours, they did have a lot of problems with the bars closed. Um, because they would gather there and they were usually intoxicated uh after leaving the bars and of course they want to eat. And some, if a confrontation occurs out there, then uh that's when we start having problems.
And I'm not saying you're gonna have problems. I just want to be able to know that if there are problems. Our local police department, the sheriff's department or someone has the right to look into what's going on.
Of course.
On the property. I mean, I will call the, by the way, we are, we're.
I would call the officer myself right away.
But the way this is written, we're giving no curfew twenty four hours. It's an open ended. So I guess I would like to see a little bit more restriction on it.
Well, you can't sell alcohol after.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about just alcohol. Uh, you know, it's just like issues.
I I go and I park in the parking area and blast my music and bother all the neighbors. Who has the right to come in and tell me that what I'm doing isn't allowed?
But why would, uh, like if I'm there, why would I allow that to happen?
You're not always gonna be there. That's the issue. You control it very well when you are, but this, the, these, that's why I ask.
So you're saying that when I'm not there, people are just gonna drive in to the property and do what they want to do.
They may. They may. And if we give an open ended one like this, we have no.
Well, if they, if uh, if there's a report on it, well then, the officers need to take action. If somebody is on the property.
But there's no curfew, there's no nothing that he can go and say, you're not supposed to be here at this time of night.
Or isn't there a curfew for music, to have loud music after a certain?
Granted, this doesn't mean that she's exempt from all the other ordinances we have, like noise and.
Yeah, we.
I mean, isn't there a ordinance for that?
So the music's too loud, there's an ordinance, you know, if there's a
Yeah.
Parking problem, there's an ordinance.
Do you foresee any issues with the way it's written?
Just make it.
It it as far as the, the law enforcement end of things.
I think it would, it would be nice if, if it was enclosed and it's not. That's one of the, the problems I see with it. I don't want to see her, her property damaged. I don't really foresee anybody hanging out there. I I don't know what type of food trucks are are scheduled to be there and how many people would show up. I I know there was food trucks, there was a food truck there recently, but I really didn't see many people at it.
Well, there is a food truck sitting there right now, but it's not operating.
Right, yeah. I see it open a while back, but.
Yeah, it's not operating.
So. Yeah, I think, I think it depends just on the popularity of it.
So aside from the, the, the bigger activities that you have like four or five times a year, you're just talking about uh food truck traffic.
Yes.
For the majority of it.
And the evening. I have it's, yeah, that's it.
I think, I think if there was something that, that uh, Mary Ann and I can work out if she starts having problems. Uh, we can address it and we can take care of, of, with each other.
I believe so.
Um, Mary Ann is.
They'll probably be more afraid of me than the.
I know I am.
So Mary Ann, I always had the working relationship, those contacts and young things. And so I I did, I believe that if we have any, if we have any problems, I think we can address them and we can take care of it.
We sure can.
Okay, well, I want to call for a question. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to item number four.
Approved settlement agreement between the city of Alpine and Tyler Technologies.
Okay.
Don't I remember that on this, we.
Of course, we need a motion first. Okay, need a motion on this and then we'll get the discussion.
I mean, that we approve the settlement agreement between the city of Alpine and Tyler Technologies.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, now we can discuss.
Yeah, the uh previous uh police chief and it's an agreement with Tyler Technologies and it's supposed to provide some technology to the police department, which they didn't do. And uh, the police chief asked, Megan asked me to look into it, sent them a letter asking for the contract. They agreed to cancel the contract and give us back our money to go pay them.
What kind of gigging over here? Because they sent the ticket writers, even though we are turning on track.
I think, I think part of the problems is that I can preview this where the package came from, the package came from, except I do not think that the Tyler Technology Office in Texas was talking to the manufacturer. And we never got any information back on this, as far as what was, what was happening. And when Rod contacted us, um we could just, we went back to our emails and they never, they, there was no contact email.
Can we legally end our contract since they've already provided?
They've already agreed to do.
Yeah, they provided the termination contract. We will be mailing back the equipment. And and they will be reimbursing us what we've already invested. And and just a little bit more background, Chief Martin had the same problems. Um, questioning, how do we do this? What's the timeline? They sent a schedule which was included in the packet. It was never followed. It was very hard to communication. And I I don't think it's any one person's responsibility for playing. Um, they've agreed to disagree with us on why we want to terminate, but they're gonna let us terminate. We just kind of make them in and we get our money and they get.
They are amazing for national technology, provides these kind of services, but but this just sort of got threw it up like this.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, city council member comments. We'll start with the right side.
Uh, to offer condolences to the, to the family of Michael on behalf of city and and the city council. He was a very important part of our community and we're going to feel the lost in many areas, not just one. Uh, not just as him as a, as an individual, but as the type of services that he provided. Uh, and I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Sarah.
No comment. I want to just thank the city staff for all they've done this year. And the city council and wish everybody happy holidays and they're playing the National Anthem in Las Vegas right now for the NFR.
I just want to thank everybody for I know we went a little long and we've got a few minutes, but I want to thank everybody for being here. Also, the condolences to the Scotter family. Uh, great service they provided for over thirty years. Uh, great service they provided for over thirty years. And he will, Mike will be sorely missed, uh, but you know, uh. Again, my condolences to, not only to the family, but also to his team. Because they were like a family there, so. Uh, I just want to make sure that that message is conveyed to them. Okay, and also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, uh, Megan and Gio. Uh, in this transition we've had in the last few months, y'all have done an outstanding job. The city has continued to move forward with, in a positive direction. With new changes made, which I think will benefit the residents of of Alpine. Well, that's it. Again, y'all have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you all very much for being here. There's no executive meeting, so I will declare this meeting adjourned.